She's funny, she's smart, she creates chocolate every day, and she is the Greek goddess of coffee. Here is your host, Ellen Karas.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to Karas' Comedy Corner. My name is Ellen Karas, and you are listening to the guest edition of Karas' Comedy Corner. Yes, you don't have to listen to me and the thoughts in my head. We have a great guest today, I'm very, very excited. But before we start, we have to thank our sponsors. Our first sponsor is Baywalk Marketing. Go to their website, baywalk.net, for all of your advertising and marketing needs. They can help you with any kind of flyer, they can help you with your social media. They're also experts in the Greek community. Go to their website, hollywoodgreeks.com, to find out where all the Greek entertainment is, and hellenicfestivals.org, to find out where there is a Greek festival near you. And they are happening, people, so everybody needs to have a souvlaki before Labor Day. And our other sponsor is Select Flex. What is it? It's an orthotic. What's an orthotic? It's also called an insert, and you put it in your shoe. Why do you need this? Because your entire body needs it, your alignment, your back, your knees, your hips, your shins. Everything starts with the foot. And let me tell you something, these are so much better than the over-the-counter orthotics, because these have an adjustability in the arch, where you can adjust the arch to firm, extra firm, extra, extra firm, depending on what your needs are. Go to their website, selectflex.com, S-E-L-E-C-T-F-L-E-X.com. And for Karas' Comedy Corner listeners, there's a 25% discount if you type in the code FAMILY25, F-A-M-I-L-Y-25, because I think of you as my family, except I don't fight with you guys as much. So type in that code and check out their video, go to their website. I'm telling you right now, it is a fantastic product. I don't leave the home, my home, my home, without it. All right, so, very, very excited, I got to have this lovely young lady be a guest on our show. And, all right, let me start with, you know, this isn't generally a political show, but I am a firm believer in the First Amendment, and speaking your mind, and whatever your viewpoint is, we respect everything here on Karas' Comedy Corner. Now, I've been kind of blunt with some of the things, viewpoints that I have. It's just the way it is, it's okay, everybody calm down, all right? I, I'm always attracted to just interesting people. And when I mean interesting, something out of the ordinary, something outside of the box. I came across this woman, she was in a, at an event with Andrea Katzamatidis, who we've had on the show, who is wonderful, amazing. She is also the chairman, chairperson of the Manhattan Republican Committee in, in Manhattan, the Manhattan, and then I think she also has a position in New York State. But, be that as it may, I had seen that they were at an event together, and it was a fundraiser for our guest, Jacqueline Toboroff, who is running for city council district number one. We'll get to all of where that is, what that is, because as a lifelong New Yorker, I gotta tell you something, I'm still not quite sure what the city council does. I don't know really what mostly, most of anybody does, except the mayor. And we know how I feel about our current mayor. So, listen, I just want us to all live in harmony, be, be, live in a place where we can be the best of what we can be. And New York City is my home, I grew up here, I've lived here basically my entire life, and it means the world to me. And we do have an election coming up, and we should at least be informed and make the best choice that we feel is the best choice, and not just sort of go in the booth and go down the line, which, listen, I've done that too. I get it, I get it, but I'm trying to be a better citizen. So, without further ado, let me introduce my guest, Jacqueline Toboroff. Hi, how are you? Can I call you Jackie? Is Jackie cool?
Call me Jack, of course. And I'm really honored and thankful that you're giving me this opportunity to speak with you.
So, I'm, I could say this right off the bat, because it's the obvious. When I saw your photo, I'm like, she looks like Angelina Jolie. Um, and you would not see Angelina Jolie as running for, for, for anything. You would, you'd see somebody like you in the movies, quite frankly, somebody that looks as gorgeous as you. And I started to investigate, and I was, I was intrigued, because from what I know about you, I don't believe you've ever been in politics, ever. And it's, I, I do find it fascinating when it starts from a mission or starts from a cause. Is anybody in your family in politics? Was it the family business at all, or?
One in my family has ever been in politics before, but I've grown up, and I apologize, I know that I look a little cross-eyed here, for whatever reason, my camera has me off-center, so I apologize.
I should, I should look, I should look so cross-eyed, go ahead.
I'm focused, but no one in my family has ever been in politics before, I've ever run for any political office before. This has been born out of a 13-month period of extreme frustration. Like you, I'm born and raised in Manhattan, I have two young children, and we are living in a time of extreme dirt, danger, and dejection. And I'm an active, I'm an action-oriented person. It's very easy to complain from the sidelines. I decided to do something about it, because like you, I'm heartbroken over the state of our state, quite frankly.
Yeah, it's, it's, so for anybody that doesn't live here, or is just not aware, New York City, and I don't want to trash it, because I want people to come here. Even on my cellphone, on my outgoing message, I say, "And come to New York." Like, I, I'm, I feel like I should work for the tourism board. But, it's gone down the toilet, let's just be frank, okay? Crime is on the rise, I don't care what de Blasio says in the camera with what I think are soulless eyes, and whatever they want to do and manipulate it, just pick up any of the newspapers, read the news, you'll see it. Walk down the street, you see the homeless, which is horrible. And I'm, I'm not trying to equate homeless equals crime, but the homelessness, we've seen it, has increased exponentially. It was happening prior to COVID, and we cannot blame all this on COVID, absolutely not. Not, there's a bit, a bit of an attribution to it, but not in total, like the politicians that want to do it. There have been a lot of very, very bad laws passed, and, and I, I feel, I mean, I grew up in diversity, I'm Greek, you're of Jewish descent, Jewish, and you're Eastern European. We are all, this is the melting pot, they call, I don't hear that term anymore, for some reason, I'm not quite sure why, but this is the melting pot. Okay, you know, Ellis Island was the stop, they got, they got their, you know, everybody had a document and, and record where they were, and all this other stuff, and, and life went on, and they appreciate, I could talk about just all of my relatives and everybody that I know, of, you know, they came here for a better life. And, and some stayed in New York, some didn't, of course, but some stayed in New York. And one of the things about New York City is, it's always been accepting. It's, oh, and let me repeat that, it's always been accepting. People found their people, and they formed these neighborhoods, and then other people came to share in their cultures. So, I want to debunk the myth of that people are fighting with each other, and we don't get along, and we live on top of each other. We have to pretty much get along. You don't have to have a cup of coffee with everybody every day, but we get along. And what has gone on here? The, the, you know, the, the arts, you know, obviously, we're still, we're still in the state of, somewhat of a state of close-down, as far as Broadway and, and Lincoln Center and some of the other things that people come here. But, overall, the quality of life has, has diminished. And to me, everything starts also with law and order. You have to have law and order. And I feel like the people that are in charge now, that have been, have turned that concept on its head to say that people are being arrested without cause and because of how they look. And I am not going to sit here and say, maybe there is a, some, a few circumstances that might, you know, I'm not out on the street on the beat, but overall, this is not happening, and I'm going to tell you why. Because some of these people that have been getting arrested and that have been in the newspaper that I've read, they've been repeat offenders. Like, how many times is this going to happen? So, the quality of life, the subways, the pushing, which is something that went on in the 70s and the 80s, and again, it's not like it was completely eradicated, but not to this degree. It, it, it's the garbage, even the garbage, it's like, doesn't anybody look around to see all the trash? So, I have a passion for it, you, you've lived here also, I believe, you're a native New Yorker. Where did you live? What neighborhood?
Grew up on the Upper East Side, I went to NYU, I graduated from Parsons, so I'm committed to this city, I now live downtown, I have to, District 1. I would just challenge one thing that you say. The truth of the matter is, the uptick in homeless people that are roaming around and living on our streets absolutely has had an effect on the crime spike. The reason for this is, they have emptied 40% of our prisons. And 50% of, and I know that people hate it when I, when, when numbers are spewed in general, but 50% of homeless people have, have mental health issues. So, the truth of the matter is, there is absolutely a correlation between the uptick in homeless and 100% the uptick in hate crimes. Every time you read the paper, the hate crime that's going on is, is a homeless person, mental health issues, to your point, repeat offender, sometimes 40 times, 30 times. We had a bank robber, I read it last year, who was let out six times in a day and robbed six different banks. So, we have bad policy that is effectuating bad outcome. Nothing here is happenstance, this is not, to your point, this has nothing to do with COVID, this has to do with bad policy.
So, let's just go back for a second. So, you grew up, you went to NYU, Parsons, what is your background, your work background?
I got a BFA, graduated from Parsons, creative, art. I was in fashion, I had jewelry.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing because it's like the opposite of politics.
I don't know, I'm an out-of-the-box thinker, so I'm not so sure if it's the opposite. But, you know, to what you had asked me earlier, no one in my family has ever been in politics, but I grew up in a very free-thinking household, where dialogue was encouraged, and differences, real diversity, differences of opinion was encouraged, except you had to come with receipts. So, we were challenged, my parents, you know, wanted us to expand upon our thoughts. We grew up reading, listening, um, this is how I grew up, and this is how I'm encouraging my children, I'm, I'm bringing my children up. You know, you don't have to take what I say at face value. Challenge me, tell me why you're challenging me, show me where it's wrong, show me why you're right, let's have a dialogue.
What, what's your work background? Did you, did you work in the, in the Garment Center?
I worked, I was a fashion designer, I had a jewelry line, and right now I have my own company, I make the most gorgeous children's archival albums. But I, I'm not plugging that, I, I, but yes, I work for myself, I've always been creative. And this maybe will bring us down a different path, because it's always surprising to me when, especially now, people who are creative really are aligning themselves with Marxism, communism, socialism. We've seen how this has ended for them, book burning, killed, excommunicated, thrown out of a country, so, you know, creatives, look, I'm one of you. I, I graduated from Parsons, you know? You're in the wrong party if you're on the left right now, because the truth is, there is no moderate left, it is very progressive and very suppressive.
Well, interesting that you use progressive as the word. I always found it fascinating how the, 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 let's just say Democrats, for lack of a better word, you know, the Democratic Party has, has described themselves as progressive, which progressive is a great word, I mean, who doesn't want progress, right? If we didn't have progress, we wouldn't, we certainly wouldn't be on Zoom, that's for sure. And, and, and like liberal, liberal, liberal is good, it's like liberal, yay! You know, it's like, it's like, oh, we're open, I love that, right? Who doesn't love that? And then conserve, Republican, conservative, sounds like, ooh, I'm tight, I'm, you know, I, you know, I put my, I, I won't wear a, my blouse isn't unbuttoned, but I mean, you know, I, I, I'm going to dress like a Quaker, you know, like that is, that is that visual, and it, I just find it amazing. And then, when I hear the ideas, like get rid of the police on the progressive side, and they're like, no, 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 we don't mean, we don't, and then they get defensive, no, 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 we didn't say to, we just said, take the money, okay? And put it to social workers, and it's like, oh, so you're going to send some poor unarmed soul out into a domestic dispute, or a, a street fight, or, you know, something horrific? You're going to send somebody like me, who's, you know, let's say I was a social worker, of, you know, five feet, I mean, what am I supposed to do? What would, something like, I mean, I just don't understand it, I just, or somebody like, is it robbing a bank, or, or attacking somebody? And I'm not saying that the follow-up shouldn't be a, a mental health examination and assigned to a social worker and all of that. But, at point of impact, if it has to do with violence, or, or anything of that nature, you need people armed, law enforcement that is trained, so I don't get that. But, that's what they say, it's, it is just the weirdest, it's just the weirdest, it's the weirdest thing. Well, how do you feel about that? Because, you let me just, I'm sorry, let me finish this last thought. So, you are running on the Republican ticket, and we live in New York City, and, and it's like, it's the, it's the, I don't know what, it's like, Republican equals like rats. I don't understand, I don't understand how this all happened, and, and I don't want to hear about Donald Trump, we're not even going to talk about that, I'm, I'm done with that, enough with that. And, and, so, you know, you've got a huge challenge, and, and we want to get to also exactly what your issues are, point by point, but you have a huge challenge, because you're not on the, you know, the majority team. And I will say this too, voter turnout in New York City has been very, very low. So, I don't know if it's like, the majority are Democrats slash, hey, I think you should call yourself progressives, or just enough people don't go out to vote, so we don't really get a, a really good statistical sample of exactly what, what is going on. I think that, I think the latter, I, I think that there are a lot more Republicans out there, and, and obviously, it's like you can't say anything, and they're just, there's more apathy on that, you know, on, on that end. So, how, how do you feel about that? Like, that's such a challenge, and the, and the wording of how we're described.
You've brought up a lot of really great points. I think one of the things, just to go to the wording, you and I discussed this offline, the left has this brilliant ability to create word salad. They take words that are aspirational, whether it's Thrive, the program that Shirlene McCray, who has no business dealing with any mental health issues, stole a billion dollars, or misplaced, or cannot account for it, and certainly cannot prove any sort of empirical efficacy that Thrive helped, helped, period. You know, should I say she stole it? I don't know, we don't know where the money is, and we don't know what was done with that money. We certainly don't see the results. DEI, CRT, which schools are pushing, Critical Race Theory, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, these things sound aspirational and lofty. They're poison, they're Marxism, they're racism, they're suppression, they're poison. What else is there? They, they take words like racism, Nazi, they mean nothing anymore. Basically, every conservative is a racist or a Nazi. Jewish, black, white, whatever, you're a Nazi, you're a racist. So, they do this, this perversion of words, and we need to fight back, we need to challenge them on their lexicon, or we need to beat them at their own game, because we're losing that battle, and we need to step up, and, you know, not, not apologize and not get sidetracked for being called names by them. They don't know how to use the names, they don't even know what they mean, so that's how I feel about that. Regarding being a Republican in New York, look, I think there's nothing sexier than being a Republican. There's nothing more boring than a reduction, which is exactly what the left is. It's sheep-like mentality, there's no innovation, there's nothing creative. Look, I remember, you know, hearing stories about when my mom was a hippie and the left, and maybe it was cool, and they were fighting for something, or against something. What is the left fighting for now, other than complete destruction? What are they creating? What are they doing? It's, it's a snooze, I mean, everyone I know that's interesting really is a Republican. They're, they're coming up with ways to do interesting things, to move the dial, they're free thinkers, they're creative, they're creative. And I think that's what, what attracts me to republicanism. And by the way, I just want to say, republicanism is the party of freedom. I don't care what you do in your home, just let me live my life. And there is nothing sexier or cooler than that.
You know, it's, it, it was, you know, Democrat, Republican, a way to just sort of dissect Democrats like big government, they, they are more in tune to like, take care of government, create an agency, create this, create that. A Republican, and this is, this is something I absolutely identify with, and, and I, unlike you, did not start out in the creative arts, I started out as a CPA. I got my MBA in finance, I've worked in public accounting and Wall Street, so I am all about economics and, and numbers and, and all of that, which blows my mind when somebody that has had that education, or is in that field, can be so in, in, you know, feels like they're so in tune with the left, when I'm like, okay, and, and you know what, let's push out social policies for, for, for a second, you know, which, which again, I don't care, like, me, I'm like, I want to form my own party, the good person party, just be a good human being! Like, what is, there's two kinds of people in the world, to me, good people and a-holes, that's it, if you fall into one of those two categories, I mean, I'm very cut and dry when it comes to that, but it, it does blow my mind when somebody who's got a financial background is all in on huge government spending. And, and I will say this too, and I, I was critical, I think Bush had spent a lot, you know, there were things that Trump spent a lot on, you know, so I'm not going to sit here and go, Republicans are fiscally so conservative and Democrats spend, I mean, Republicans have spent a lot too, so I don't, I would just want to be truthful and honest about that, for sure. But, philosophically, I'm of the smaller government, I am of the private sector, I am of letting people create for themselves. I mean, we're seeing in our beautiful city here, I think one of the huge fabrics of this city is the small business, as we call them, the mom and the pop shops. And I'm not going to begrudge a landlord for putting in TD Bank, because they're going to get 15 times the rent. Again, if I'm going to walk this financial walk, then I have to walk it in its entirety, I get that. But, but what's happened, forgetting about that, is there's still plenty of small businesses that this city has made it impossible between taxes and violations and all kinds of things. I mean, I talked to restaurant people and my couple of nail salons, and they were brutal during COVID. You would think there would be some, some empathy, I was just going to say this really quick story, really quick story, and it was on one of my podcasts, because I had these two photographers, and they, they photographed all these mom and pop shops, James and Carla. And they had said that they went to, there was a restaurant in their neighborhood, they put up those stanchions, the city came back, told them, no, 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 that's not the right material, so they went, spent more money, put up other, you know, these, those outdoor, for the outdoor dining, and the city came back and go, no, put the first ones in. They were giving out crazy violations, I mean, it was just, it was just, I can go on and on about that, but it was just ridiculous. So, all this to say that, you know, you know, pro-business, we are, we are pro-business, we are pro-capitalism. This country would not run without capitalism. It does not run without the, without the stock exchange, without people buying into it, without buying company, there is no target, there is none of these things. And this is, this kind of blows my mind, and I'm not saying you got to be greedy, and I'm not saying cheat and all that other kind of stuff, and white-collar crime should be punished just as much, and severely, you know, severely, nobody should, you know, no one should skate away, no matter who it is that they know. But, you know, this is like, you know, out of control. And like you said, just to bring that back, and I, I want to get to your, some, some of your points of like, what it is that is driving you to do this, and what are you looking to change, is the, the crime, because we can have all the money in the world, but if we have all this crime, and one, and there, and every time you arrest somebody, there's going to be, it's about unfair and unjust, and they, there is a, you know, it's funny, it's called the criminal justice system, it really should be called the victim justice system, because it's generally the victim. So, you know, there's so many areas that I just don't understand where the left is coming from, even if maybe there are some good intentions, we should be open, we should be inclusive. Nobody should lose their job, or be discriminated against for age and sexual orientation and all that. Well, I, I think the majority of Republicans, I believe, are, are on board with that. No, again, nobody cares, be a good person, you know? So, I, I'm sorry, I just went on a tangent, but, so, so, I, I hope that for you in your campaign, that you can really drive home a message about, these are values that people should want to live by, and not, you're radical and you hate everybody. I mean, I don't know how the left commandeered that message for, 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 for Republican, the Democrats did that for the Republicans, it's, it's awful.
It's the opposite, I think the left assumes everyone's their audience, and the right assumes no one is their audience. You know, to your point, I think that part of being a Republican is freedom. And I'm all about personal freedom, I just don't want my freedom infringed upon because of you. So, I'm with you, sexual orientation, race, religion, it's inclusive. The Republican Party is inclusive. You know, I think that, to your point, if we cannot get a handle on crime, there is nothing else that's going to matter. And right now, crime is through the roof, there are a bunch of reasons why. The NYPD has been defunded by a billion dollars, this has degraded the homeless division and the anti-crime division. We have CCRB, which is Civilian Complaint Review Board, this was brought to us by city council. We have qualified immunity that has been stripped from police officers, though every other public servant gets it. You know, why don't we strip that from judges, from the mayor, from the governor? It's, it's so outrageous. And then we have Cuomo's no cash bill. So, what we've created is an environment where police are hampered and handcuffed, and criminals are emboldened. What I'm most afraid about is this potential new incoming DA Bradz, who wants to emulate Chicago and San Francisco and Baltimore, and have zero incarceration, which is not unlike my opponent, a progressive, that wants to get rid of the NYPD, get rid of all security at schools, get rid of gifted and talented, I mean, this person doesn't even have children, he has no clue what parents are dealing with, both becoming stay-at-home teachers, specifically moms that have had to leave their workforce, their careers, to become stay-at-home teachers overnight. Not only that, but the crime situation, women are soft targets. So, what I would say is, the Republican Party is the party of women. We are the people that are most affected by the left's horrible, deadly policy. And I'll tell you something else, city council has 51 members, there are three Democrats, 40 city council members right now are being term limited out. You are going to see a whole bunch of new faces. You guys need to wake up, right, left, moderate, it's irrelevant, okay? The only issue now is your personal safety. You need to think, when you leave your front door, do you feel better right now? Do you feel better with the defunding of police? Do you feel better on the subway? Because I can promise you this, with this potential incoming DA, with a liberal, progressive, potential mayor, with potentially more progressive city council members, you're going to need a lot of help. Even if you're a Democrat, you are going to want someone, you're going to want to check and balance. And you you have to start voting in new voices, people outside of this uniparty, so that at least there is some sort of dialogue and someone's looking out for you and someone can say, hey, I'm a Democrat, but you know what? I do care about crime. Or I'm a Democrat, but a Democrat of of your, you know, I actually, I care that there's garbage on the street and there is this homeless crisis. We've not been helping them. So my point is, in a very long winded sort of way, we need to elect new faces. And to all of your listeners that happen to be Democrats, I hope that you guys can elect some Republicans, because there really needs to be some sort of accountability now, and there isn't.
So let's get back to specifically what you're running for and where you're running. So it is City Council District One. What is that? Where is that? And what do you do?
Okay, so let me start with the last question first. City Council is supposed to be the mayoral check. That's why actually the election November 2nd is the exact same day as the mayoral election. So it's November 2nd, and we are the mayoral check. We allocate the entire budget. So the defunding of police, ladies and gentlemen, was brought to you by City Council. The mayor acts after he is consulted with the city council, okay? And what has happened is we've had more radical and progressive city council members. They have made de Blasio actually seem conservative. I'm going to say it. That's true. So, you know, keep that in mind. We monitor all local government agencies like the DOE, Department of Education, and the NYPD. So you're definitely going to want at least a couple of city council members that have a loud voice like me and that are fighting for police, because trust me, there will be plenty of city council members that will be arguing just the opposite, that they want to abolish, defund, reimagine some more. So that is what City Council does. District One is Lower Manhattan. It's parts of Greenwich Village all the way south. It's Tribeca, Soho, Battery Park, parts of Greenwich Village, Little Italy, NoHo, Nolita, Financial District, Chinatown, Civic Center. So I'm really appealing to all of you, again, to to Ellen's point. It's about safety, whatever you are, we are in unprecedented times and city council members have never had this much power. Everything that goes on outside your door is City Council. So I would encourage you all to take notice as to who's running, because you're going to need your city council council person to really work for you. We work for you. You don't work for us. We're paid by your taxpayer dollars. And one of the things that I'm running on, I'll tell you my positions, but I feel very strongly about the fact that New York is broke, and this is going to speak to your heart as you're a numbers person. New York is broke. We need to get back to basics. It's like when you go to the grocery store and you're buying stuff, you want to understand the ingredients. There's so much pork in everything right now, and no one can say, oh, this this has actually made my life better, just the opposite. We need to cut spending on virtually everything but the basics. NYPD, sanitation, a couple of other things. But really, we need to get rid of everything at this point until we can balance the budget, quite frankly.
So I'm sorry, where is the money gone? I mean, when you say pork, so so where is it being spent? Because in the last
I'll tell you.
Let's just say five years, you know, Wall Street was booming, tourism was booming. And by the way, everybody, we are going to see the effects of the lost revenue from the Broadways and everything that it's related to restaurants and from the, you know, the coffee guy. We're going to see those effects going forward, like in the next 12 months and the next 24 months. So so where was all this this fun money going to? What like examples of like some really outrageous?
Yeah, sure. We have something called transgender library reading. It's going there. We, it's helping immigration. It's it's going to
Immigration in what sense?
Federal, local, I mean, it's 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 thrive, it's going to mental health, it's going to programs that are not making our lives better. Partly because of government mismanagement, government malfeasance. They they fight wars that are unwinnable. There are certain wars that are winnable. We know what happens when you have police that are able to do their job. We saw it under Giuliani and under Bloomberg. We know how this works. This does not take reinventing the wheel. You know, do we need drag queen reading hour at the library? No, we don't. No, we don't. Maybe maybe that should be some sort of an elective thing.
Well, I was gonna say, what I was gonna say was, that's totally fine. You can do something private. I mean, somebody can put some money up and do, no one's so let's just make sure we're clear on this. No one's saying you can't do some of these things that you want to do. We're just saying that that there in the in the priority list of life, we have other, we need to allocate the money to the most important things. We're not set, and I want to make the message clear, because this is where it turns around like, oh, I got your homophobic. No, I didn't say that. You didn't hear me. I didn't say, don't have it. I'm just saying, find the money from a, trust me, you'll get it, okay? You'll get it, because there's a lot of people that are supportive of these causes, and that's great. But that should come from, that is something that could should come from private money. And how much money do you actually need? I don't know. But I'm just, I'm just saying. We have, like you said, we have a mental health crisis. I would rather put the money, I have to say, as a former auditor, I'd love to know where that thrive money is. I am shopping at the bit to know where that is. But hire some great, qualified, pay them, okay, get paid people $25,000 a year, a professional with an MSW. That doesn't work either. You know, pay them good salaries with good backgrounds. And what about building, building, I know, crazy as this might sound, building some facilities? And it doesn't always have to be in Manhattan. And again, when you say this, it's your hater. I'm not a hater. I want these people, whoever can get better, I want them to get better. But we have a lot of land on the outskirts that you can build beautiful hospitals, hire people, get some of these people off their feet. And you know what? There might be some people that might not be able to leave. I don't know. I'm not, this is not my area of expertise. I'm just saying, how come they talk about building? Meanwhile, de Blasio goes and puts the homeless, when all of this happened, to take them out of shelters, put them in hotels on the Upper West Side. The Upper West Side, which is considered, and I know this isn't your district, but this is just kind of an example. I think somewhere down in the financial district.
It does affect me, because he moved the people from the loose term to a couple of different locations, one of which was the Radisson, very close in proximity to a great public school in 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 Battery, in Battery Financial District area. You know, look, a couple of things. It's not everyone's right to live in Manhattan. You know, it's not a right to live in Manhattan. There are a lot of things I like. I'd love a jet and I'd love a boat. But I make financial decisions all the time, and if I do those things, I'll go broke. So it's not everyone's right to, you know, because you're homeless, to be homed in Manhattan. That is not a right, you know? And again, to your point, let's 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 have an adult conversation here. No one is saying that there shouldn't be or or that there cannot be a transgender library reading. I'm saying this is not high up on the list of priorities. I'm saying we're broke, and if it comes to getting shot in the head and needing a police officer or needing a transgender library reading, I'm going with police officer. You know, we have to make adult decisions. And children are using words like reimagine. Reimagine means death and diaspora. No adult uses words like reimagine, because we know what that means and where it leads to. So we have to grow up and maybe speak to the left like they're adults. You know, we're not homophobic, to your point. And just because we might not be able to afford something here, because it's not high list on the priority, doesn't make someone a homophobe. It actually makes them fiscally responsible.
And that's what is missing. I mean, throughout the country, this isn't even just like a New York City thing, totally fiscally irresponsible. So so tell me, let's say in your district per se, how many council members are there right now? Or how many seats are there available?
Well, in my district, so we have Margaret Chin, excuse me, she's term limited out. So my opponent on the left, I have someone on the left and I have someone who is running as an independent. So there are three of us running.
Okay, for Margaret Chin's seat.
Correct.
There's one seat available in your in your district. And what are what are the term limits? Is it, what is that? What does that equate to?
It has changed. It was four years and now it's it's two years.
Oh, so it's short.
Yeah.
Oh, it's really short. So 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 what what hap, when did this pop? Like, I'm doing this, I'm going, do you go to meetings beforehand and get frustrated?
You know,
How many, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, how many are there? How many are there on the on your council in your in your area? Yeah.
There are 140,000 to 100, I I actually, I think it's 160,000. There are 50,000 registered voters. There are 9,000 registered Republicans, 1,000 registered independents. But keep this in mind, I noticed this actually as I was petitioning, Republicans have this strategy where they they sign up as a Democrat so they can vote in the primary.
About that.
I'm not so sure either. That's working out for us, but the numbers are not that abysmal and things have gotten really bad. This is a winnable race. It's a winnable race.
How many, how many city council members, if you replace Margaret Chin, how many city council members are there in your district?
So my district has one. My district has one. District One has one city council member. There are 51 city council members in New York, and there are three other Republicans currently. So we need some fresh blood. We need some new, we need some new voices that aren't coming out of the uniparty, really. And sorry, what were you asking?
So what was, what was the moment that it popped? Did you go to city council meetings and then you're like, that's it, I'm done, I'm running?
The moment that it popped was, it was a combination. I had met AJ, who I adored, and she was really helpful and supportive. And just, I would say, the condition of New York. I'm divorced. I cannot get up and move. I have a custody situation, you know, I have children here. My family is here. Not everyone can afford to get up and move. We have to make it better. That's really, what made it pop for me was a combination of hybrid school. I have a tent city on my block. There's there's crime. I felt unsafe. I'm from Manhattan, you know, heartbroken, like you. I I think that's what made it pop. COVID made it pop. You know, but it wasn't, as you said, it wasn't. What happened during COVID was that the the varnish came off. It wasn't all of a sudden during COVID, everything became horrible. No, what happened was, is that the light shined a light right on all of these problems. New York was broke before COVID. We were already heading off of of a cliff, quite frankly. And things got exponentially worse on account of COVID. And, you know, you said something earlier, and and it it really does strike a chord with me. New York is inhospitable to business. They have, for whatever reason, really vilified working people. And it's it's a terrible thing, actually, you know, as you have kids, to punish people for hard work. It's almost like they made people that were working under a bubble of rich, when that couldn't be farther from the truth. People live paycheck to paycheck. People, you know, own a deli or, you know, the bodega or, as you said, a mom and pop store, a restaurant, a boutique. And they they pay staff or they are the staff. They have bills to pay. This was just so inhumane how these people were treated. And landlords have been made like the new Trump vilified. What happens to these landlords? What happens to anyone right now? It's it's just the whole the whole position has been turned on its head. Essential worker, everyone that provides a roof over someone's head, puts food on the table, is essential. And and who is anyone in government to be so classist as to say, you're essential, you're not? You know, it's it's such an entitled position to take, to to judge someone's worth on on being essential. So that was another thing that struck a chord, a chord with me.
So so if we hope, we hope, when you are elected, so what what is the job like? Do you have city council meetings? Is it all of 51 in New York City get together? Like, how does it work? How does that, do people go? Or is there like a district meeting, so people would come from your district to you and and the whole like state assembly and the city assemble and all of that? Like, where do all those other politicians interface?
So there are different committees that you get put on. There are five people per committee. I've actually already drafted my first piece of policy. I'm I'm like, wow, right on it. It's going to be called the Parents' Bill of Rights. I've absolutely had it with CRT. I've had it with these schools. And I can get into the details of that, but how that would work is I would need four other city council members, because you need five, to come on board. And, you know, there are already three Republicans. I would really look to recruit someone who is on the left, but who's a parent and who's been going through this this horrible time of closed school, CRT, all of this stuff, the you know, it's it's, yes, CRT really bothers me, but what bothers me more is that somewhere along the way, it got lost in translation, schools became, in their heads, the surrogate parents, and they are not. And they, the power that these schools and school boards have amassed, the DOE, is really, it's unprecedented.
It's scary.
And they've gone so outside of the purview of their point, which is to teach core curriculum. I don't know what's going on now, but in any event, I've I've come up with this policy and I plan on presenting it day one that I'm in office. It will be called the Parents' Bill of Rights. It will be, some of the details are bullet points. 60 days before the start of school, so approximately July 4th. The school must provide students, legal guardians, and parents the entire year's curriculum. The entire curriculum. There is no way there can be any amendment to this curriculum unless they get 80% approval from parents. Another thing, parents can opt out of all of these moronic DOE emails, which they've been sending ad nauseam. I mean, there was an email sent to over 250,000 parents bashing cops. Talk about outside of the purview and scope of education. But but parents can opt out of these emails. They should only be getting pertinent information as it pertains to their children and the curriculum. Another thing is, if a parent requests, a parent legal guardian student requests any information on their grade, their performance, the school has 14 days to get it to them. So parents aren't left wondering, what the hell is going on? My kid's been absent, this, that, the other thing. There are more points, but what this bill will do is it will take, it will basically make moms the new union members. It is taking the power outside of the DOE and the the school boards and putting it in the hands of the parents where it belongs. There are some other points that I'm working out, but this will be ready. There are some other points that I'm working out, but this will be ready day one. And then what we'll do after I get these four other city council members on board, which I have a feeling I'll be able to do, because, believe it or not, Democrats care about their kids and they're upset too. I mean, it's, this is, this is upsetting. Um, you present it to the mayor and he has thirty days to respond. If he doesn't respond, it goes in. So.
Oh, boy.
That's day one.
Yeah, I don't have children, full disclosure, but I have two nieces that go to public school, that have always gone to public school. So I know exactly what's been going on. Uh, the kids are very upset, very upset, there's, there, believe me, there are tons of parents that are upset. And I will tell you this, and I believe I mentioned this to you offline, I'm gonna say it right here, right now. Uh, the, the kids don't want the parents to make a stink because they're afraid the teacher will take it out on them. That is a fact, ladies and gentlemen, that is a fact. Do you wanna know what you should teach your kids, okay? And, and nobody is saying, don't talk about slavery and do not talk about the history, and that is fine. We all learned it and we all know about it and it's, it's, it's where it was, it was where it was. But this is beyond, and, and what blows my mind, from what I know, from what my niece has shown me, okay? Is that they want the kids to hate themselves. Well, I thought that we're concerned about the mental health of kids, right? Teenage suicide, the vaping, the drugs, the opioids. But we're adding, but, but, so, so that's like the big thing. And then, of course, if they're struggling with their sexuality and, and being open about that and making sure we don't feel anybody to be less than and all of that, I get it. But, but, but the dichotomy is that, but we're teaching, we're telling kids to write, my niece wrote how to write. I hate white people. This is insane. This is happening, and if anybody wants to know, call me and I'll, I'll hook you up with the parents, okay? This is ridiculous, it is beyond, it is gone beyond. And, and the, the, the media, the mainstream media doesn't seem to report on this. Um, however, we do have social media and we have some places like WABC Radio seven seventy AM, which I am a huge fan of and have been forever, and that you were on, and I heard you on Greg Kelly and you were fabulous. Um, and a place like that, where they have everybody. Uh, and that's where I hear it, or on Fox, and I know you say Fox and everybody goes twisted and whatever. I'm not saying I agree with everything on Fox, I'm not saying I, and I, believe me, I don't watch every show at all. But those are places where you'll find things like that. And there are parents that are having these discussions and are losing their minds at school board meetings because of things that their kids are, are now told that they need to, how they have to think. And, and it's like, okay, this is all about hating themselves, like what's going on? Okay, what's going on? The teenage mind, what, what's, I thought we're worried about the anxiety. I, I don't, so bull, it's, bullshit, it's all bullshit, it, it's ridiculous. You te- you do teach, you do, you know what? Why don't you teach a course about, if you wanna do something behaviorally, I don't have a problem with that. Respect, courtesy, manners, how, how to write a thank you card. You know, there, I mean, if we're gonna go down that road a little bit, you know, there, there's a zillion thi- open the door for someone. There's a million things you can do. Um, this is, I'm sorry, I mean, like, we're just blowing, completely blows my mind. I don't know, how about write a check, uh, how to use a credit card, uh, give them fake money and let them, uh, invest in stocks? You could do that when, when they're in high school, and I'm not saying that, I, I don't really.
School, they should do that in middle school.
These kids are savvy, they're very savvy, so there's so many things, there's so many things, that is really important. And I'm happy to hear that one of your platforms is to go after the DOE. And, oh, I'm sorry, one more full disclosure, my father was a teacher, my aunt was a teacher. I've got aunts and uncles that were teachers that worked, excuse me, for the Board of Ed, okay? So trust me, I am all in, I get it. And, and there are some amazing teachers that changed lives, they grip their hearts out, they have helped kids. They have told parents how they, they think their kid has a learning disability and the, and the parent can like just, you know, step on it and get the kid help. There's a lot of great teachers, so again, again, about, about the, uh, the PR, you know, that's, that's not the agenda. That's not the agenda, but this has gone over to the other side.
Let me just, let me just add to that point, there are great teachers out there. My kids have great teachers, there are great teachers. And all of the great teachers have something in common, they do not tell children what to think, they teach them how to think. Um, that's the difference, there are great teachers out there, there are a lot of teachers that are in a horrible position because they're totally against CRT and they have to teach it. I was on the phone with a teacher who reached out to me on Instagram, she's white, she's Jewish, and she said she had to partake in some sort of, um, like, uh, lecture series and, and teaching series, telling people how bad white people are, and she went home and she threw up. Uh, there are, look, there are plenty of teachers, and again, just like for parents, it's not so easy to say, well, that teacher should quit. People have to work, you know, people have to pay bills. It's not so easy when you've spent your whole life working in a career to just get up and go. Um, e- everything is nuanced and it's not so black and white. It's not so black and white and, and we have to have empathy for the situation. These are really tough times, but it does, we, we need some adults in the room that are capable of making tough decisions, because these are tough times and wha- what we're looking at is really a grim picture, because in order to get this back on track, we're gonna go through pain, we're gonna have to cut a lot of programs. And yeah, a lot of people are going to be upset, but New York is broke, New York is broke. And look, the, the, we've discussed this, I don't know how many times we, we can say it. The number one issue right now is crime, look, for me personally, um, if I can't get my kids to and from school safely, I can't even begin to talk about school, right? If I can't go to a restaurant safely, get on a subway, what's the conversation here?
Okay, Jacqueline Toboroff.
Yeah.
Candidate for city council, Republican nominee, District One, New York City, which is the lower end of Manhattan. What do you stand for? What are your points?
All right, I stand for police, I stand against criminals, I stand for morals. Um, I stand for good education. Good education to me means critical thinking and core curriculum. I stand for a great quality of life. Right now, the return on investment is low, our taxes are too high and we're getting way too little. Um, and I do stand for empathy. I, you know, I'm a mom of two, I get it, it's changing your political party, voting differently is coming to Jesus for a lot of people. It is very difficult to do something radical that you have not done before. If you've traditionally voted a certain way, it is very hard to cross that corner, you know? But I will say, uh, look, even, even if you wanna just talk about the environment for a second, this is something that can only be improved under capitalism, under competition, under innovation. And that's what I stand for, I stand for free thinkers, I stand for innovation, I stand for competition, I stand for meritocracy. I stand for America, I stand for freedom. Um, I stand for school choice, I stand for safety.
Uh, so, so we've talked a lot about, about school and school choice. Uh, what, when you, when you talk about you stand with the police, that's great. Uh, are you for body cams? I mean, what about also if a, a police has not acted appropriately and has violated whatever the policies and procedures are, because again, I, you know, nobody should, uh, everybody should be held accountable, uh, against the law. So, so how do you feel about that? So you said, we say you stand for police, but what about when the, when the situation is not in the, in the favor of the police?
Equal justice, we shouldn't have bad cops out there, and look, I, I don't think there are too many of them, I just don't. If you look at the numbers, if you look at the numbers, there are not too many bad police officers. But of course, there shouldn't be any, and there should be equal justice for everyone. Whatever your race, whatever your religion, whatever your gender, uh, whatever your position in life, uh, occupation, there should not be bad police officers. Thankfully, there are not too many. I mean, if you look around at the police officers, the NYPD, for example, it's as diverse as it gets. I mean, you have every gender, every race, every religion. Um, you know, to your point, look, my kids are at a school, uh, I'm white Jewish, some of my closest friends are brown Muslim. Um, my children have friends of all, everything, all races, genders, religions. Um, sometimes I wonder, you know, who are they talking to? This, this Manhattan is the most inclusive city, it's the most diverse city, uh, in the most diverse state, in the most diverse country in the world. Um, we do not have, we're good people, we're good people here, we're good people. We've gone astray and we can get this together, New York is not a foregone conclusion, okay? It's worth fighting for, New York is worth fighting for. And we can do it, you know, uh, just try voting Republican once, then you can go back, see how it goes this one time. See how it goes this one time. Um, you know, I, I'm looking to go into city council, not because I wanna rule you, I actually don't. I think that, I'm really adverse to big government, I don't like government interference. Uh, and that's, that's actually why, why I'm going in, I don't, I don't like big government. And I think that they have really broken every rule and they have just, they have violated us, we're in an abusive relationship right now, actually, we're in an abusive relationship with our politicians. And we need to cut this abuse.
You know, in talking to you, I asked you in the beginning about what made this pop. Uh, made you decide to do this, because you really, you put yourself out there, you're trying to raise money because you can't have a campaign without money, uh, you have to get media, uh, behind you, you have to get interviews. Everybody should, you know, have a fair shot to be able, who's running to be able to say what they stand for. But, uh, now in talking to you for a while, you know what? They poked Mama Bear. What wound up happening, uh, because went after the education, which is, which is a very, a big, uh, 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 huge space for you, uh, having school-aged children. Uh, and I, I, and, uh, and I'm glad, I'm glad they lit, lit a fire under somebody like you with some common sense thought processes and not like we should live in a kingdom and this is the way it is. And, and like you said before, like, who are they talking to when they're, they keep talking about all of this? People hating each other, and again, not to say that they're, they're, we, we haven't had that kind of crime. It should, and, and what should happen is, it should get punished to the fullest extent. So, you know, again, district attorneys, like everybody, like, wake up, wake up, what are you doing? Nobody that has, has, no one should push an old lady off of her we, off of her walker and then, and then get caught, okay? Because we've got surveillance all over the place, I mean, the, the cops are, I think, are, have done a pretty, a really good job of the, you know, the, the catch, but what we have here is catch and release. And then they're out, but what is it, like, you're arrested by lunch and you're out by dinner? Like, it's like, I, I don't find that, I'm a comedian, I don't find that funny, that's a true statement. So, so they've poked Mama Bear, uh, and, and I love it, I love it because we need people like you. And so what can we do to help you? Uh, obviously, we give us all your social media, we have a campaign, how much can we contribute? What, you know, uh, and, and I, I urge people, if you have any kind of a platform, whether it's a podcast, which is, whatever, whatever it is, uh, a TV show, anything, I'd say, and you know what? You don't even have to be in New York, yo, just get Jackie on and, and.
You're so nice, Ellen, you're so nice.
I, well, thank you, and I, I, I'm, I wish I had your chutzpah, I wish I.
You do, you know what, you do, you do, no, you do.
I had it, like, I don't know, I, I, you know, I, I don't know, I dated a lot of.
I wanna say something, let me say something hopeful. I wanna say, I wanna leave people with something hopeful and then I'll give all of my information. Um, everyone contributes in their own way, whether it's you with your podcast, whether it's donating, whether it's, uh, telling a friend, everyone, this is, this is where the empathy comes in. Everyone has their limits, everyone has their specialties. Um, and everyone contributes in their own way, there's no better way, there's nor, there's no more essential way or valuable way, everyone does their share. And it's, it's admirable, because people have had a lot on their minds. Uh, we've gone through a tragic time, people have lost loved ones, uh, finance, financial ruin. Um, we've gone through a really tumultuous time. And I think, again, you know, we're good people, New Yorkers are good people. Um, you can donate to me from anywhere in America, as long as you're an American citizen. Um, any political party, it's irrelevant. The maximum for city council is one thousand dollars. Um, the minimum, look, it can be a dollar, everything counts, right? Everything counts and I totally get it. Um, people are really financially strapped right now, so anything counts, a dollar is great. If you're in my district, District One, which is from Greenwich, parts of Greenwich Village all the way south, if you give me a minimum of ten dollars, I get CFB Campaign Finance Board matching funds of eight to one. So that ten dollars becomes eighty. So as long as you give me ten, I get matching funds and they match up to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And you can find me on Instagram at Jaceline, that's J A C Q U E L I N E for F O R N Y C, I'll spell it one more time, so it's J A C Q U E L I N E F O R N Y C. And where else? Oh, you can donate to me at, um, J A C K I E F O R N Y C. Again, that's J A C K I E F O R N Y C. Um, I wrote a New York Post op ed, you can check that out, from June fourth, all about Washington Square Park. I'm gonna fight like hell also for the parks. Um, these are public places, they are, they are right now under a hostile takeover, a criminal enterprise. Uh, you have to navigate syringe needles, all that stuff, uh, gang violence, criminals, uh, mental health issues there. So, um, I am, I am taking on the parks, I will protect and preserve. We're the environmentalists, anyone on the left, I encourage you to read that article that I wrote. Go to my Instagram, I want you on my team, if you're an environmentalist from the left, you come to my team because I'm doing more for the environment than I've seen anyone on the left do in regards to Washington Square Park. So you come to me because we need to clean up these parks and preserve them, there are not supposed to be toilets. Um, so you can visit me there, I was on Greg Kelly, I'm making moves, I'm on your podcast, I'm making moves.
I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled, I wanna talk to you, uh, we, maybe we can put together a Stand Up Comedy Night fundraiser, perhaps?
Love it.
Find a space and we'll talk about that. Uh, I'm all, I'm all in for Jackie. Um, and, uh, we are going to post all of your links and everything on the audio page, we'll flash it on this screen or it'll already have been flashed, uh, for the YouTube video. And please, everybody, I beg you, please, keep an open mind, don't do the Republican this, that, that, that. Just listen to the issues, that's all I ask. Uh, and I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed with you, it's not like you have nothing going on in your life. Uh, it's time-consuming, it'll be a full-time job. And I, I, what I'm excited about is, uh, I, I, I hope you win by the grace of God. Uh, and you'll get your feet in there and you'll, you know, kinda get a name for yourself and then it kinda starts from there. Because I see. Because I see good things. I, uh, because it's, you know, I, you know, a lot of well-known politicians, you know, started with something very, very local.
I want to tell you something. Um, throughout this process, I've made amazing connections. I really value people like you. I've met amazing people that have been so helpful, both inside the political party, outside the political party. That's been such a great benefit. Just throwing that out there, that again, it's, it's surprising when you put yourself out there. I haven't been attacked. Um, I, I really, I haven't lost any friends because I'm a Republican. I haven't been attacked. I'm, I'm really looking to recruit people. And I view this whole process that I'm going through as forming a coalition. This isn't about me. We are all suffering. My district is in shambles. And I'm really looking to put together a coalition of parents, of moms, of women. That's really what I'm looking to do.
Humans, humans, neighbors. Uh, to just get back to a quality of life. And, you know, listen, this life, it's like this. It's a split second. So we want to make the best time on earth and respect. And, and, you know, and not to sound like elitist or, or anything, but you know, this is one of the greatest cities in the world. And it's, you know, you and I are lucky that we were born here. We didn't have to come from someplace to, to come here. Uh, people, sometimes people only dream about it. And, and we have a lot. And it's rich. It's rich in history. It's rich in acceptance. It's rich in the arts. It's rich in education. And, um, we've just fought, you know, for whatever, for all the reasons that we talked about and more, we've fallen off and, uh, sort of, you know, fallen off the, uh, the objective of sort of goodness and of, of, of come here, come, come here, come visit, come taste, come eat, come have fun. Because it's not fun right now. And, and we ought to get it back to, uh, fun.
Yeah, we need, we, I'm with you. New York is a sexy, fun, dynamic place. Let's bring that back. Let's bring that back. Let's bring that back.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you so much.
You're the nicest. Thank you, Ellen. You were so kind. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Bye, everyone.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. And I'm Ellen Karas. Follow me on Instagram and Twitter at Greek Chick Comic. Uh, at Facebook, Ellen Karas Greek Guys Comedy, my website, EllenKaras.com, where you'll find this podcast and all the other ones that we've done for seven seasons. That's right, folks. Uh, thank you so much, everybody. Please, please, tech, check out Jackie Toboroff. She is amazing. Thank you. Till next time. Bye.
Bye. Thank you.